Good afternoon. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for today. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Present.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to City Administrator Perkins to get us going for the advanced agenda for November 28th.
Thank you, Council President. Happy Thanksgiving, members of the City Council and those in attendance this afternoon. Johnny Perkins, City Administrator, Council President, members of the City Council, this is the advanced briefing agenda for Monday, November 28th. We're going to change our lineup card this afternoon, and in the first position out of the gate, in line for departure in the number one spot, joint resolution with Spokane County in the matter of authorizing the Spokane Airport Board to purchase property located on a Spokane County assessor tax parcel. Our presenter is the Chief Executive Officer of the Spokane International Airport, Mr. Larry Crowder.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. We appreciate you being number one for takeoff today in the briefing session. Council President, members of council, great to be here. We have a short presentation for you, and please don't hesitate to stop me and ask me questions as we go forward. As City Administrator Perkins mentioned, we have a land acquisition matter, 11208 West Electric Avenue. In September last year, we received a call from the owner of this property, Mrs. Atchison, and she asked us if we would be interested in purchasing it. The property happens to be adjacent to property that we already own in the approach to runway three at Spokane International Airport, so we engaged an appraiser, and the appraisal came back at $320,000. We made that offer this spring. Mrs. Atchison accepted it, and the airport board approved it. Just to give you a high-level view of the location, you can see the star off the end of runway three on the lower left, and then you can see a photo of the residential dwelling unit, and then the general location of the parcel off of Electric Avenue. This view is just to overlay some of the airport compatibility zones to give you a better sense of where this is located. You can see it's an ACZ-5, but also located very close to ACZ-3. And again, just a closer view, you can see we own all the property to the west of Mrs. Atchison's parcel, so for us, it would be reasonable to go ahead and acquire it, being adjacent to our property. And again, just further locational descriptions of the property relative to ACZs and the location in the runway three approach. And then, just a final slide showing the location with regard to the airfield noise zone. You can see it's well within that airfield noise zone. These are areas where residential use is incompatible with the airport, so another reason for us to be interested in acquiring the parcel for Mrs. Atchison. So what we're asking council today is to approve the joint resolution authorizing the purchase and sale agreement with Kelly and Elizabeth Atchison for the acquisition of 3.42 acres, located in parcel number 14011.1501, and the amount of $320,000. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you, yeah, thanks for the presentation, Larry. Do you have plans for the land, or is it more just, it kind of just fits to acquire it, and that's why you're pursuing it?
It really is about compatible land use. Councilman Cathcart, in this particular case, any residential use that's in the approach to the runway is incompatible, and we want to make sure that we're pursuing any of those incompatibilities. It would be a piece of land assembly for us at some future point. We may have a use for it that would be compatible with the airport, so I would say that it's not inconceivable that we might sell it at a future point or develop it for some type of a compatible or an aeronautical use.
My concern, you know, goes to taking property off the tax rolls, obviously, if we're not intending to use it for something, but being that it is in the noise zone, I wonder, is there any, like, uses that could go in there that would be compatible with that?
Great question.
Industrial or...
And definitely, light industrial uses that would not have any kind of noise sensitivity would be perfectly acceptable in that area. So if it would be a light industrial use, such as a manufacturing facility or something of that nature, would be completely incompatibility with the airport noise zone. So yes, there would be a future pathway for that land to come back onto the tax rolls.
Okay.
So Larry, I was just going to ask, had the airport ever reached out to this property owner in the past to try to purchase this property?
No, ma'am. A lot of times, we will have property owners who reach out to us on a voluntary basis, just like Mrs. Atchison did in this case, and most of the smaller parcels that we come before council to acquire, particularly residential units, are actually initiated by the homeowner to us either here or even at Feltz Field.
Is that her asking price?
She didn't really have an asking price, Councilwoman Kinnear. She just basically said, please come back with an offer, and this is the fair market value offer, and she accepted it as appraised.
So is it the fair market value? This is complicated. Is it the fair market value if you're going to repurpose that property for, say, a residence, given that there's very few things you can use that property for? Is that really the fair market value?
Well, I think it is, and it's a great question. So the property is evaluated on its current use, but also the zoning, and the current use being residential, but the zoning being light industrial. So I think if anything, it was probably the most favorable conclusion of fair market value that Mrs. Atchison could receive.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
All right, we're good.
I just wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving. I had mentioned to Councilman Bingle that we will all be out working early on Wednesday. We have about 7,500 departing seats on Wednesday, and on Sunday, we have about 7,700 departing seats. So it's going to be really busy, and we're really excited for the holiday travel season, and just appreciate always council's partnership and support.
And he's looking for volunteers.
I just want to thank you for the extra parking stalls at the airport.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's my experience this weekend was like...
I think we'll be using them starting tomorrow. We were able to construct another 500 parking spaces in our economy lot, so well timed for the Thanksgiving travel season.
I was going to say, we need more shovels in council office.
Ah, I'm actually working on that, Councilwoman Stratton, so stand by. Maybe next month.
Okay, if I could have a little crown on top of my shovel, it'd be great.
Duly noted. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Always nice to see you, sir. All right, moving then to our consent agenda. Number one, a purchase from North Coast Electric Supply of three 1,200 amp transfer switches for the water department, and our presenter is Lawrence Searle.
Good afternoon, council. This item is a request to purchase three transfer switches for $79,000 from North Coast Electric. These are part of our backup power emergency generation system. Currently, if we lose power, we have to drive out there and hardwire a generator in. So these give us the ability just to plug that generator in, making it much quicker to get the station back up online. Any questions on that? Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Searle. Item two on the consent agenda is a contract extension with the Covia Solutions for the subscription to ClientTrack software. Our presenter is Daniel Ramos. I do not see Mr. Ramos online or here in the chambers, so I will text to see if we can get him to come down here shortly. Moving ahead then to item number three on the consent agenda, American Rescue Plan Act grant agreement with the Novia Foundation for the launch of the Northwest Program to Support and Promote Addressing Educational Opportunities. Our presenter is Kalib Stanton.
Disparities.
Good afternoon.
Disparities? What did I say?
Opportunities.
Oh, I probably was saying that, thinking that, and then I said something different. Yeah?
Sorry.
That's all right.
Good afternoon, Caleb Stanton. I'm standing in place of Michelle Murray to give you the contract overview for the higher education contract. So the background of that is to supply and expand student wraparound services to schools located in the city of Spokane while also providing last dollar scholarship assistance to students who graduate and attend an institution of secondary learning. This will cover administration costs of the program launched Northwest from 2022 through August of 2026. This is a $5 million project, and we're requesting approval to contract with the Novia.
And we're just using the contract that they used with the county, essentially?
Correct. Correct. We're piggybacking off that contract.
Thank you, Kalib. Item number four on the consent agenda, multifamily housing property tax exemption with 4A Spokane Housing Ventures, 4B Skyline Homes LLC, and our presenter is Taylor Berberich.
Berberich. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Taylor Berberich, and I can usually be found doing urban design with Dean Gunderson up on the sixth floor, but today I have my economic development hat on. So we have two properties today. They are Vets on Lacy, which consists of 10 units, and the Apartments on North Foothills Drive, which consists of 36 units, and these are both in District One. I'm pleased to say that both of these are going for the 12-year program, which means there's the affordability, affordable housing concept. And if all goes well, there will be around 15 affordable units added to Spokane's housing stock by the time the projects are done. Just as a reminder, the PowerPoint for these projects can be found in the packet, and it has details for both projects. All right, thank you.
I just have to, you can keep going. I just have to say that I was part of Spokane Housing Ventures when we started Vets on Lacy, and so I'm excited to hopefully see it to its fruition here soon, because it's really a critical project. In your district, Councilmember Cathcart and Bingle, just so you know. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Item five and six on the consent agenda. Item five, reported the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library. Those numbers will be completed and filled out for the council session on Monday, November 28th. And item six, city council meeting minutes that also will be provided for the council's consideration on Monday, November 28th. Moving then to special budget ordinances. Number one is from the golf fund. This action arises from the cost increases in supplies, fuel, and various capital expenditures, and our presenter online is Mark Buening.
Good afternoon, everybody, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss this, particularly virtually. This is the second requested SBO that you've seen this year for the golf fund. We have some of the same issues, but we no sooner transmitted the first SBO, and we received a change order for the major roof replacement at Downriver. Therefore, that necessitated the request for the second SBO. And there are really three parts to this $300,000 request. The first is $100,000 for inflationary increases in many of our operating accounts, particularly for fuel, building supplies, and fertilizers. The significant operating cost of much of our supplies was not foreseen in the development of the 2022 budget, and we've had a good year at the golf courses this year, so there's a marginal cost associated with that. So that's the first part of that request. The second issue is the change order to replace the roof at Downriver, and we're requesting $100,000 for that purpose. And the third component is the request for an additional $100,000 for several minor deferred repair and maintenance projects at the four courses. This includes window replacement at Colton. We want to do some car path, cart path repair at Downriver, and we also like to have some money set aside, because we typically have some potentially expensive maintenance costs on some of our boilers during the winter, so we like to have a little bit of reserve for that as we head into these colder months. And also tree maintenance is at the front line. We have a need to repair or replace or remove a lot of several different trees from our storm events and winds that we've had this year, particularly at Downriver, but some of the other courses also. This SBO has been reviewed and approved by the park board, and if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Thank you, and I hope you all have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the advanced agenda for Monday, November 28th involves first reading ordinances. The first is establishing a local program for assisting landlords and tenants in Spokane. I believe, Council President, we have briefed that at a previous committee meeting. I don't know if there's anything more you wanted to add. Councilmember Bingle has a question.
Yeah, I circulated an email earlier that I was wanting to defer this until February 6th. It doesn't necessarily have to be February 6th, but I've gotten a number of phone calls on this particular issue, and, you know, there's just some things that I have some concerns about, hoping that we could have some more public, open discussions, because we haven't really had those concerning this particular issue, certainly not recently. So hopefully, we can foster some good public discussion on this, and so I would move that we defer this to February 6th.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So my question, I don't know whose, are you on the housing group with Nicolette? You're part of that group, so it's my understanding that there's been quite a bit of outreach, especially with the landlords. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, I can't, a little bit. I know there have been lots of discussions. There's been lots of outreach, and Steve Corker has been wonderful about attending all of our meetings and taking that back to the landlord association. But having said that, we've been talking about this issue for so long. I don't have a problem if we need to defer this for a few, for some time, so that if you feel you have questions, I can help connect you with the people we've been working with on that committee, and it might help you get the information you need.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
So when I first was appointed council, this was an issue that was another hot potato. So there has been conversations and groups meeting to try to figure this out. I guess I'm challenged as to why, at this point, there's more engagement you would like to have outside of this housing group that's been going on for a period of time.
I guess I would go the other way and say, why at this point has there not been more engagement? For three years, there hasn't been a meeting that I've been allowed to attend that's been on this topic, and so I would love to have some more actual public meetings to talk about landlord tenant issues, and so rather than resolving this in a back room, we can do it upfront.
I'll just have to kick back. The landlords and the tenants are the ones who've been meeting, who have driven, who have gotten us here.
But now I'm expected to vote on it, and I was never allowed in any of those conversations.
Well, we did have it at the Housing Action Subcommittee. That was open to anyone.
And Council President, can you tell us, you've been answering some of those emails, so are people confused? What's the tenor of the emails?
Yeah, I don't, there's, I've gotten a lot of emails of people who are confused that thought that they had to pay $127 for each rental unit that they had, which is not the case. They just, all businesses in the city have to have a business license. There's a $10 per unit charge. I don't, my view is, we could take more time, but we have two weeks of testimony that we can have and meetings that we can have. If we need to organize something in that time, I'm happy to host something. But for me, from where I sit, and I realize it's different, you council member, we've been doing it for four years. The same people say mostly the same things, and they're all legitimate points of view. This has been something where we had a balance of landlords and their lawyer, and the tenants and their lawyer to come up with something. So I feel like it's a pretty good balance. It's not very, it's not, I don't think either of them will say, oh, my gosh, this is great. The tenants aren't going to say, oh, my gosh, we finally got what we wanted. The landlords aren't going to say too much. I don't think it's overlapped by anything proposed at the legislature currently. So personally, I would just like to have the next two weeks of debate and get a vote, and then if there's more after that, that's fine, but that's just, that's me. Councilmember Oppone.
Yeah, just to address this issue of meetings that aren't happening publicly or other things, I mean, we vote on things all the time, that small groups of people work on all the time, that aren't presented to all of us for the whole time. Like, the airport just presented something that they've been working on a long time, that I've only heard about right now, and yet we're going to discuss that matter. So not every issue has been. It's come to committee. It's come to briefing. We'll have two hearings. It's a lot of public engagement there, so.
And this group has been meeting a long, long time, and even during COVID, we were meeting on Zoom or WebEx, and Council President's correct, we had an equal number of tenants and landlords, and the agreement during that whole process was, not everybody's going to get everything they want. And so, I mean, personally, I think this is a good, a good place to be with this ordinance, but, you know, if there needs to be more discussions, we've been talking about this for so long, and maybe if we, another attempt to get information out there won't come back as misinformation, because, you know, the last meeting we had was with the landlord association, and I do not believe, and I look at my notes, but I do not believe there were any red flags for landlord association on this version. But I'm happy to, you know, spend a few more weeks letting more conversation happen.
Councilmember Bingle.
And I guess just the small difference between the airport board presenting something to us and this is that this is going to result in real costs for the citizens of Spokane, whereas, you know, the airport decision there isn't going to be the same thing. We could be talking potentially, you know, $100 a month or so in added cost to a renter, which we already know.
$100 a month?
$100 a month? Sure.
Where would that come from?
Well, if you have to have a business license, if you're charging extra amounts of money, if you have to hire lawyers and accountants and things like that, that's real-world costs that gets, you know, passed on.
There's no lawyers, I mean, there's a business license, which is annual, so, and that's $127 a year. So I'm just pushing back on the monthly.
Sure, sure. You're going to have code enforcement that will be coming out on the request of an individual, which is fine, but that will require, or it won't require. But if I'm the owner of a property, I'm going to want to be there. That has real-world costs if I own other businesses and things like that to the business as well as to the individual.
Code enforcement already can come out.
I understand.
What this law says is you can't charge the landlord, so it's actually a pro landlord.
Except for the money's coming from the money that we're charging the landlords. The landlords are still paying for this. They're just paying for it upfront, as opposed to when they come out. That's what those fees are being used for. And so with that being said, the real-world cost that there is, is somewhat different than a different issue. That's the point.
Worth discussing.
I just, I just, Mary, are you opposing the license? Are you opposing the cost?
I'm not necessarily opposing anything. I'm saying there are real-world costs to the city that we just learned about. These are things that should be, a discussion should be had about them. Now, you, again, fair points are made that these discussions have been happening. That is true. This is the first time I've been in all the conversations, and I'm voting on it. So, I mean, we don't have to defer it. I'm making the motion too, because...
Well, it's a committee.
Yeah.
It did come to committees.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I think that adds, that's the public engagement piece, that, you know, having these public conversations, that I think is important, so that the public, our constituents, understand directly from the landlords, directly from the tenants, exactly what it is they want or are concerned about. And I think we could then understand, okay, are the tenants willing to make trade-offs, increase cost potentially, or even have the conversation, are there increased costs? Let's have that public dialogue with landlords who actually are real-world landlords involved in this, and tenants who are, you know, dealing with these issues. I just don't understand why we don't want to have that conversation.
We do. We're going to. That's how we do their process.
I just wanted to say, just because you got, this was before your time, but we had meetings in every district of the landlord association and the tenants' union, and I believe we had some open, public conversations here. So there have been really numerous getting those groups together. Just so you know, if you want to have more discussions, those have happened. There may be different players now, because this has been three, four years ago, but for the most part, we really have gone out there and talked to people to where it's, we know where the, I guess, the touchy subjects are.
Councilmember Oppone and Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, for me, I mean, this is real impact for people right now that could be benefiting from this, both landlords and tenants, and they've been having this process for multiple years, a lot of... And they've been having this process for multiple years, a lot of engagement process with the main stakeholders in a way that's engaging the public. So I'm ready to move forward with the vote.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, the only other thing I would add is whether or not we defer this for more, more time for discussion. I do have a lot of amendments that I'll be submitting for us to consider. So I'll hopefully have those out before this weekend.
Councilmember, can you?
So, and there's a bigger issue because this has come up repeatedly. We're not all equal when it comes to our time on council. So things happen, and when, when Councilmember, what's your name, Stratton, she was, she was our first.
I'm Lori.
I'm Lori. Lori. Came on council, she was the first. Things were happening when she was on, and Councilmember Beggs, then Councilmember, and me, were new. So we had to catch up. It was on us to catch up. And every, every single council member after that, it's on you to catch up and realize that work goes on, even though you're not there, to see it. Work has gone on, and it's been productive work. And that is the case with this. And I remember that big, this room was full of people, twice. So we had everybody packed in here in the gallery, trying to talk about landlord tenant issues. And it was impactful because there were a lot of voices. It happened twice. And there were a lot of voices here. So we can't all be part of every conversation at, at any given time in history of who comes on when. You're going to miss something. It's just the nature of how this works.
And it sounds like we'll be having some good debate. But all those in favor of deferring until February 6 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was three people. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. It's not deferred, but got a good preview. We'll look forward to those amendments.
Councilmember Cathcart.
All right. We are still under first reading ordinances. The next one is relating to the regulation of food delivery platform fees. And I believe this was also briefed at committee. This is under Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, this is just follow-up about the 15% limit option for third-party delivery fees to our local restaurants. We've talked about it quite a bit, so if there's any questions, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, just continuing the last one, you know, this was briefed at committee. One of the suggestions I made was to have a study session so we could hear from the folks that we're looking at regulating. Has that been considered? Is there a plan to bring them in and let them have some time to share with us the impacts?
I would say that every council member has the opportunity to chat with those stakeholders on their own, and they've reached out to me. I'm imagining they've reached out to you, too.
But I guess more than the three minutes we're going to give them when we vote, I would like the public to have the opportunity to hear from them what the impacts are going to be.
They can reach out to their government affairs specialists.
Seriously? That's, okay, wow.
It's also been reported in the newspapers. It's been publicly reported. I don't think we need to...
Just go back there and just make all the decisions.
I mean, this is decision-making process.
I would say it's been, so they have, you can meet with them. They've had opportunities, they've, we've met, both Councilmembers Zepone and I have met with them. We've met with the food industry folks. So there's been process, we were approached by the food industry folks, and they're saying we're drowning here. We are a little restaurant, we, our life savings has sunk in this restaurant, and we're being charged these exorbitant fees.
Bring them in, too.
We need some relief. It's about supporting small business. And we have, right now, the war is going on between GSI and hospitality industry because they don't agree. But it's not something that I want to get involved in. I want to protect our local small business.
And I had also, I had calls from hospitality and the other Grubhub?
Grubhub.
Yeah.
DoorDash. DoorDash.
DoorDash. I talked to them a couple of times as well.
Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, I would just say to process, like, we have a process for considering all legislation. We can't take time to have a study session about every single issue with all stakeholders of everything we consider. That's why we have processes for this, where groups meet and talk about it together.
Right. In a couple of weeks, we'll have some good, good conversation. All right.
Two final items, going back to the consent agenda. Item two, contract extension with Covia Solutions for the subscription to Client Track software. Mr. Ramos is out ill today, so we can have that, him here next Monday. And then the last item on our Advanced Agenda for Monday, November 28, under hearings, H1, the continued hearing on the proposed 2023 budget.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the Advanced Agenda for November 28?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right. The agenda is approved. All right, turning to this evening's agenda, I am looking at page five on consent. There is a request for a motion to substitute one contract on item, that's item four, is that, am I getting that right? Connor, North America?
It's Consor. Is that the one? Consor?
Consor, yeah. Is there a motion to substitute? So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? That's substituted. And on the next page six, there is also on item six, a motion to substitute on Department of Commerce Utility Bill relief.
Yeah, page six, number six.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
I'm sorry, I'm still, I'm still not finding the one. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to...
Oh, sorry. Number six on consent, on page six.
Oh, okay, okay. Aye.
Okay. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. That's substituted. And then on page eight, there's a request to suspend the rules to add a resolution 0101 on prioritizing funding current homeless shelter operators before we add new ones. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Some moves to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended. Do you want to go ahead and read that title, Ms. Fister?
Sure. Resolution 2022-0101, expressing city council's intent to fund current homelessness, shelter and service providers prior to funding new shelter beds and declaring unaside revenues in the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund and previously approved ARPA funds available for sheltering services.
And this arose based on a notice of funding availability that appeared to reduce funding levels by about a third or $1.5 million for existing homeless shelter providers. Since then, the mayor's met with the providers. I think the position might have changed a little bit. This does not set specific numbers particularly, but it says if you're going to prioritize between existing and new, you would fund the existing first. I'll first take a motion to see whether we add it. But, so is there a motion to add this to the agenda for tonight?
So moved to add.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved a second. Any discussion about adding it to the...
So, yeah, I just have a question. I didn't know the mayor had met with the service providers. Can we get any kind of insights on where they might be going with this, or do we know?
Do you want to speak to that? Or, I mean, I could, but...
Yeah, I think, so this was last Friday. Thanks, thank you, Councilmember Stratton. With all the providers, Council President was there with Councilmembers Cathcart and Bingle. And based on their request for funding, the mayor's suggestion was to have the council consider 1.5 million of ARPA dollars to get to the 3.5 that would be necessary to cover the current providers through 20, or to support the current providers' funding from 2022 in 2023 at the same level as this year.
So just use ARPA funding is what she's saying, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, Mr. Perkins, I was just wondering why no members from the ARPA Committee were at that meeting of the proposals to use ARPA. Oh, you were, okay. Never mind. Missed it. Okay, cool. I take that back.
Thank you. I was going to say, wait a minute.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda for tonight indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay. Any abstentions? All right. It's added to the agenda. Yes? Councilmember Kinnear.
Didn't have to say anything. So under the Plan, Comprehensive Plan Amendments, I spoke with Kevin. And I, so under C on page nine, I don't want to change it per se, but rather add a piece that would, Kevin, could you come up for a minute and speak for me?
Good afternoon, everybody.
So tell them what I want.
What you really, really want, Lori.
That's a problematic request. So we were discussing the application on 31st and Southeast, correct? The one in Lincoln Heights. And there have been some concerns raised about pedestrian and bike connections, both on 31st, which is the road to the north, and 33rd, which is the road immediately south. And you had asked about various options for perhaps highlighting the need for those two roads to remain as pedestrian bicycle amenities, or in the case of 33rd, to be built as a pedestrian amenity, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And there are a number of options there that we can, that you can consider. First of all, council has the ability to amend these, these applications as part of your approval, so there's no problem there. There is such a thing as a pedestrian street designation, which has some zoning ramifications for the buildings to the, anything that's constructed to the north and south, but it also highlights that it's an important pedestrian way. There are bike, bike map amendments that you could make. 33rd is not currently on the bike map, but it could be for something, say, even a soft path, or a bike-friendly route, or any number of different classifications. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else...
That was it. But it was to leave open the possibility that in the future, so we would be able to work with planning and create something such as Kevin describes. So while we're passing this, we're also acknowledging that, that the other stuff needs to be put in. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the applicant is not proposing to amend our street map. They're not proposing to abandon the 33rd right away. That came up as a conversation with an adjacent property owner. It wasn't part of the proposal. And ultimately, what we found in that exploration was that, that there's a lot of, of things out there already that point to that 33rd being an amenity, including the neighborhood plan. But also that there are, of course, still concerns because it hasn't been built yet, and people are, want to make sure that that through connection remains.
And so I'd like just one sentence to be put in there that just is a placeholder for what Kevin is describing. So it's not, we're not changing this per se, we're just highlighting what is, hasn't been said in this.
So I would have a quick question. Does it add responsibility to the property owner? Have we talked to the property owner?
It does not.
Okay. Have we talked to the property owner about the...
Because these are non-project actions, they haven't been designed yet. It wouldn't say change, or it wouldn't, it wouldn't cause them to be unable to build something that they've already decided to build. A pedestrian street designation would perhaps require different frontage improvements, a wider sidewalk, more room between the sidewalk and the buildings. It would require that parking be behind the building instead of in front of the building, although in this case, we're talking about most likely a multifamily development. They would do that anyway. It has that kind of a ramification with the applicant. But it doesn't change their overall use. It doesn't change the height, the number of units, the density, the big-ticket items that they look at for development. And what I can do is between now and tonight, I will reach out to the applicant and see if they have any concerns with that. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I guess maybe that, that answers the question I had was, could we, I mean, would we be able, if we wanted to do something like this, to defer a week so that we could talk to them? But if there's a possibility, we could hear from them by tonight?
Yeah, they will be here. If they haven't already, they will be signing up shortly to speak. And if they don't, or if you still have concerns, there is always the opportunity to continue the discussion from tonight to next week or to another hearing date. My only caution there is there's very few left, and we have to finish these before December 31st, or they will get held for a full year waiting for the next round.
We don't want that.
Yeah.
So that, that's just something to keep in.
And also, just to be clear, this is the city right of way that we own, so it's not their property, so it's really just our streets that we would have control of regardless.
But it might affect their design and things like that.
Yeah, ultimately, in the long run, it could affect little things, yeah.
Yeah, not, not a ton, but it might have some. And so just for that, if we could hear back from them, I don't think, I need a deferral or anything. I would just like to hear what their thoughts are.
And again, I'm not move, I'm not suggesting that we change anything on this. It's just that we highlight the, the piece that Kevin is talking about.
Right.
So that the neighborhood knows that this is a priority, the applicant knows it's a priority. And again, we have, it's our right of way.
Totally.
But we do need some language...
Yes.
Before 6:00 PM.
I've actually, that's why I've been furiously typing.
You can circulate, okay.
So also, you don't need to, if you wanted to say amend this, you don't need to hold this one tonight. You can have the hearing tonight as planned because folks are planning to come speak. They can speak, and then you can just hold your decision, so.
But if we can, I would like to get it done tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
Same, yeah, yeah. Just if the property owner's here tonight, then we can talk to him before we get into it, so.
I will leave here and call him.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay. Anything else? All right, so we're going to go into an executive session to discuss pending litigation. And I'm going to say till 4:35 by my watch. And we don't plan on taking any action afterwards, but we will come out at 4:35 and adjourn or extend. All right, so. All right. Welcome back to Spokane City Council briefing session. We just finished our executive session, and we are done. We're not taking any further action, and we are adjourned. We'll see you at 6:00 PM legislative session.